Try this again. Good evening. So, the school board is coming out of closed session at this point. We had a workshop that ends at 7:00. We're gonna go ahead and do what's required to close our, to re, come back out of closed session, back into open session. Then we're gonna adjourn our workshop and we'll get ready for the 7 o'clock meeting. So, Mr. Conker.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we come out of closed session.
The motion is there, second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Back into open session. Mr. Conker, sir.
And, Mr. Chairman, whereas the Powhatan County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the previous, excuse me, provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board, such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Powhatan School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, next item on the agenda is adjournment of our workshop. Is there a motion to adjourn the workshop?
So moved.
Second? Have a motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0. We are adjourned from our workshop. So, at approximately 7 o'clock, we'll convene the meeting.
(coughing)
(inaudible)
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 Alright, so I'll call to order this September 10th, 2019, regular meeting of the Powhatan
County School Board. Madam Clerk, if you'll let the minutes reflect that all members of the school board are present this evening along with Dr. Jones. And I'll take this opportunity to welcome our new student liaison, Ms. Haley Timberlake from Powhatan High School. Ms. Timberlake, welcome. We appreciate you serving as a student liaison to this Powhatan County School Board for this school year. Hope that you enjoy your service on the board and ask you to be an active participant. This is, this is the only part of the meeting where you're new. After this, you're an active member. So, anything that you have comments or questions about, please feel free to add that. And look forward to at the end of the meeting, when we get to a point where we have comments by board members, we'll give you an opportunity to speak and ask you to share your thoughts on, and on matters and issues, and also those of your peers at the high school. So, thank you again for your service. So, the first item on the agenda, and the next two items on the agenda, rather, are the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. So, I'd ask Mrs. Emel if she would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Cole if he would lead us in the Invocation.
(inaudible)
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunities to serve and to work with children. We ask for your blessings and your guidance as we do that. And we ask that you also make us ever mindful and responsive to the needs of others. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Alright, thank you. So, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do any members have changes or additions necessary to the draft agenda presented for the evening? Any changes necessary to the agenda? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept the agenda, the draft agenda is presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item of the approval is the approval of our minutes. Any discussion or need, changes necessary to the minutes? We have the minutes from our August 13th school board meeting and workshop. Are there any changes necessary? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, the meeting minutes for August 13th at 5:00 and 7:00 PM.
Alright, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next item of review of our bill and receipts. Any discussion regarding the bills and receipts, and this is just a review. Any members have questions? Our hearing none, that takes us to our first public comment period for our meeting. In accordance with school board policies, any resident of Powhatan County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, when it is your turn to speak, I'm sorry. When it's your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have three minutes. Delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so that others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not individual board members, the audience or staff, and please begin by stating your name. Board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public, during the course of public comment. And speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove guests who choose to use vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. Art, seeing no movement, I'll bring the first public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, that takes us to an exciting presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a really great opening last week and we wanted to give the board an update on that opening. Dr. Mahundro and Mr. Johns and Chris Gualtney, I think, are gonna present some information. And then I believe we have a short video that we're going to show you to give you a taste of what it was like to be out in the schools first week.
Good evening. I'd like to give you some opening comments on transportation. Then I'll have Ms. Gualtney go over some specific points. And then I'll also go over food service as well as free or reduced meal applications. Really happy to announce that our opening this year in transportation was very, very smooth. This took a lot of preparatory work, but I only received, you know, we only received one email that was a complaint and a congratulations at the same time, in that one bus had missed picking up a student. And then the praise was that Ms. Gualtney had immediately redirected another bus to pick up the student. And that was it. And, so, really pleased for that. It took a lot of work during the summer in preparing the routes. Those routes were posted earlier this year than in prior years. We had them sent out by the middle of August. And, of course, you know, last year, we had the realignment with elementary schools. And so, there were a few more issues. And we worked through that last year and had considered those issues as the routes were prepared this year. Plus, you know, last year, we had added a second dispatcher, so that person was experienced now and was able to help in preparing and reviewing those routes. And, so, that has gone very, very smooth for us.
Good evening. I just have a few bullet points. Mr. Johns asked me to prepare for y'all, some points of information. We have offered seven contract positions, so we've pulled seven drivers out of our subpool and offered them contract positions due to retirements and resignations and things of that nature. We took one single high school run and one single elementary run and combined those, and that made it, avoided us having to hire one more driver. So, we've combined two single runs into a double run and combined that contract as well. The number of routes has not changed essentially from last year. We have 49 elementary routes. Eight of those are special education. 39 middle school routes. Two of those are special education. And 26 high school bus routes. Three of those are special education. And certainly, we continue to have the special education vehicles that are not buses that go to outside placement schools. We also have two in-county special education non-bus vehicles that transport students as well. We had drivers present and buses present at both the Head Start orientation and the kindergarten orientations during the summer. We were able to bring some drivers in, and they really enjoyed interacting with those young students and giving them their first introduction to the bus and bus safety and riding the bus. As Mr. Johns mentioned, we had our routes completed and posted August 12th this year, which was sooner than, than last summer. Our drivers and all our transportation staff came in August 23rd for their, for four hours of safety training. Were, were required by DOE to conduct at least four hours per year of safety training. We do four hours in the fall and then again, four more hours in the spring. After their safety training, the drivers then picked up their route information and their buses, and then they went out, many of them went out that very day to trial run their routes. Some kind of took the paperwork home with them, digested it, and then ran their routes over the weekend or certainly before school started. Lots of them started contacting parents and, and reaching out to parents. They were excited to get back on their buses and, and welcome their kids, as they call them. We had transportation represented at each of the back-to-school fee nights at each of the schools with routes posted and, as well as drivers present to answer questions as they could or bring those questions back to us. Our two dispatchers, administrative assistant and I, worked extended hours during those first days of school to make sure there was, that folks were getting their calls answered and that we were able to either provide an answer on the spot or tell them that we would research their question and get back to them as quickly as possible. We did have some minor mechanical issues on three buses over the first couple days, and really, they were like batteries that needed jumping. And so, they did cause some minor delays, but nothing really substantial. Moving forward, we have about nine candidates right now. Two are behind the wheel for the last phase of CDL licensure, behind the wheel with students this week, and should be, should be completed by the end of the week and, and set free by the trainers, safe to drive as substitutes. We have two additional candidates who are about to test. And once they test, then they go through the behind-the-wheel portion of their training with students and the trainer. And then we have another class beginning next week that, if anyone's interested, that will, that has right now, I believe, four candidates that will be in that class to begin the classroom portion of the CDL licensure process. And certainly, day six, we're in the process now of beginning to monitor times and numbers on the bus. We do have specifically one high school bus that's been reported, but, and we'll just continue to monitor those numbers and times and, and make adjustments as we need to. Questions?
Questions or comments from the board regarding transportation?
Just wanna tell you, great job.
Pleasure.
Thank you. I'll pass it along.
Nice start to the school year.
I'll pass it along.
Alright, thank you both.
In food service, that department is also required to have annual training, and that was conducted right before school started. And in addition to the normal training things, they just did an extra emphasis on food safety training and preparation. As far as the website and the menus and so forth, in prior years, we had been using Nutrislice website program, and we've switched that to Sedexo MyWay for this year. That is a more user-friendly website for both the food service staff as well as parents and users to use that. And it's also saves us about $3,000 a year. The Sedexo MyWay also, that website has a link to a So Happy website that actually a parent can download the app to their Alexa and get up and ask it, you know, what's on the menu today, you know, at the school. So, that's kind of a neat thing. And, so, that change is also effective for this year. Several changes in marketing and so forth to try and improve student participation. One item is that Sedexo is creating a student marketing coordinator position, and that will be a student that, for their work, would receive their meals free during the year. The things that that student would be working on would be the weekly newsletters, as well as monitoring the websites that had the menus on them. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to find a high school student that potentially is, wants a career in marketing that could, you know, help us with that. They're also looking at creating a committee at the high school that would also include students. Some of the other things is adding a one-day fun day celebrations at the elementary schools. And what that would be is to, one day a month, serve the high school menu at the middle school, and of course, there'd be proportional size differences, but they'd be doing that. Add a World Food Truck Wednesdays, and that concept is just to use different menus from other, you know, some meals from other countries. Adding a healthy challenge at the middle and high school, and this is to promote specific products. But, there is also a, this is a nationwide program that Sedexo has, and so, on those days, we potentially, our, our schools could potentially win some prizes, but, and it's based upon the percent of participation at that school. So, even if we're competing with a school that has 2,500 students, you know, since it's based upon percentage, then, you know, it kind of levels the play-in feel for that. We've also, we have a adventure station at the high school already, and we just added some additional menus to that adventure station. And the last change is that the drinks at the high school have been changed from 16 ounce to 20 ounce, and we've added nine additional, Sedexo's added nine additional drinks at the high school. So, hopefully, some of these changes will increase participation at the high school. Any questions on any of those planned changes?
Questions or comments from the board? Alright.
The last item I wanted to give you some information on is the free and reduced meal applications. That's a part of the process that we still have to handle internally with school staff. At this time, we have 607 approved free applications and 76 reduced meal for a total of 683. And this same time last year, we had 583 free, 52 reduced, for a total of 635. First blush, that looks like our free and reduce may be increasing, but it's really not. What happens is the direct certifications that come from DOE, they've added two programs to that direct certification. And the, that's Medicaid and foster care for families that are receiving benefits under those plans. In the past, we still have families that had those benefits, but they had to do individual meal applications. So, it's just a shift. So, we're still anticipating about 100 more applications. We're still anticipating our free and reduced to be at 18%, which is what it was last year, but that's where we are as of today. Questions?
Alright, questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Timberlake, do you have anything to add with how the school year started off for you?
Well, we have a new football coach now, and really well, so...
Alright, very good. Alright. Alright, thank you. Dr. Mahundro?
Just wanna give you a little bit of information about pre-service week and then lead off into what we've been doing for instruction in these first couple days. First of all, I'd like to thank, we've had tremendous support from the community over the last few weeks. Powhatan Education Foundation has increased the grant opportunities for our teachers to a total of $3,000 potential per grant recipient. It used to be $1,500 per grant recipient, so we're excited about that. As you all know, also, Bob and Carla Curtis have granted our teachers $1,000 per teacher and counselor for them to use for student support within the classrooms, as well as $45,000 for STEM, music, and CTE, and then scholarships for our PHS seniors. So, we're very thankful for those community supporters. Also, we've had support from some of our groups. When the teachers came back last week, a week, actually, two weeks ago now, the NAACP, American Fidelity, the YMCA, Bethel Baptist Church, Horace Mann provided lunch and snacks and breakfast and different things for each of our schools, so we're very appreciative of that. And during that pre-service week, our teachers continued with their afternoon and evening orientation nights, which allowed for consistency across the division when all of the elementaries were at the same time, and greater participation for families because they were all in the evenings. So, that was a big success in pre-service week. As far as enrollment, last year at this time, we were at 4,303 students. Today, we are at 4,373. This is not an official count. We will have our official count when we do our ADM at the end of this month. So, that's our enrollment. And what we'd like to do now is to share a little video with you about how, what instruction looked like for the first week.
So, we wanted to provide something to the classroom teachers as a support and a thank you. So, we are doing a $1,000 grant to every classroom teacher and every counselor in the Powhatan school system.
Ah, it's a car and deer. Love it.
I took her to the wrong place, by the way.[1435.12][1435.12](laughter)
(laughter)
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 Everyone had a great summer. We are glad that you were here today.
School. She followed Dr. Jones around with the camera. And he also put a GoPro on, which is the scene from the, from the high school bandroom. I think that was the GoPro that was going through there. So, yes, thank you.
All right, any questions or comments?
What's a GoPro?
Cameras you wear.
Wear it on your head.
Oh, so you were wearing it as you were visiting?
Right, right, right.
Action video.
Yeah. I think that scene was actually Dr. Massa going in the bandroom, but there were some other footage with me in the GoPro.
That, that video or the version of it that's done every year is one of my favorite things every year. I always enjoy the faces in the, some are excited, some not so much. But I always enjoy the video. All right, any other questions for Dr. Jones or the staff regarding the various topics we've discussed? All right, thank you very much. Dr. Jones, I believe we have a recognition this evening?
We do. The board and Haley can join me down on the floor. We've got some very, a great recognition of our music program that we would like to start off the year with. I don't know where we're going to go.
Is it down here now, or where are we doing it?
It's the camera.
Okay.
Okay. I just can do it here, I'm okay.
with the Best Communities for Music Education designation by the NAMM Foundation, the education wing of the National Association of Music Merchants. Powhatan is one of only 17 divisions in Virginia to be recognized for the efforts by teachers, students, administrators, parents, and the community to make music education a critical part of a well-rounded education. The designation is awarded to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. To qualify for this award, Andrew Sneed, Lead Teacher for Performing Arts, completed an extensive survey, which included questions about funding, graduation requirements, music class participation, instruction time, facilities, and support for music education. And responses are verified by the Music Research Institute at the University of Kansas. We are excited to recognize the following music faculty. Tom Beekman, Music Teacher, Flat Rock Elementary. Nina Dickerson, Music Teacher, Powhatan Elementary. Joshua Wright, Music Teacher, Pocahontas Elementary. Chris Thomas, Music Teacher, Flat Rock Elementary. Sandra Parker, Music Technology and Piano Instructor, Powhatan Middle School. Kami Graham, Choral Director, Powhatan Middle School. Terrell Dean, Choral Director, Powhatan High School. Linda Ut, Choral Accompanist. Nicholas Sneed, Director of Bands, Powhatan High School. Gil Landini, Associate Director of Bands, Powhatan Middle School. Andrew Sneed, Lead Teacher for Performing Arts, Director of Bands and Orchestras, Powhatan Middle School. And while they're getting their photo taken, Dr. Jones, Senator Mark Warner has recognized them for this honor. And I'd like to read the letter that he submitted. He says, "I am pleased to extend my, extend my congratulations to the administrators, faculty, and staff of Powhatan County Public Schools upon the school division's selection as one of the best communities for music education by the NAMM. This award is a testament to your commitment to making music instruction available to your students. Through music education, you're helping to equip your students with confidence, listening skills, creativity, and imagination. These attributes will prove to be invaluable to them throughout their lives. I commend the administrators, faculty, and staff of Powhatan County Public Schools for your commitment to funding, staffing, and holding high standards for music instruction in your schools. I applaud your dedication to your students and wish you a great 2019-2020 school year. Sincerely, Mark R. Warner, United States Senator."
Would you like to walk us through this?
I'd be happy to, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is receive information, the monthly financial report. We also have the CIP financial report, school board facility usage reports. We have a facilities update from Dr. Tibbs, donation acceptance, consider, and that is a donation to the Powhatan High School Athletics Department from the Rotary Club of Powhatan. Have an overnight field trip to take some of our FFA students to a national competition that they qualified for. The personnel docket and addendum that we talked about in executive session. We'd like to ask these be approved as a block if the board so chooses.
Questions, comments? Ms. Cole?
Dr. Jones, what kind of competition is that? There was an initial on there that I didn't recognize.
Big E, and I'm not familiar with it either, yeah.
And Mr. Tibbs knows what a big E is?
Mr. Tibbs, you want to tackle that one? I know it's a big FFA thing, right?
Big East, so it's the Eastern Seaboard.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Okay, that explains.
So it's multiple competitions at that side? Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, the only question I had is, does the board have to accept that donation that was made, or is that, was that handled differently?
Foundation, Education Foundation.
Because that was through the foundation, it wasn't directly the school system is why we didn't do it as a board item, yep.
I'm fine with that.
And that was a requirement that the Curtis's had based on how they set up their trust, that it had to go through the foundation.
No problem at all. Okay, other questions or comments? So we're looking at these in a block. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
All right, have a motion or a second? Second. Motion is second. All in favor of approving the consent agenda in a block, please respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next item is to consider approval for new advisory committee members. The various school board advisory committees are listed there. They are starting to fill out with interested community members. They are highlighted in yellow, the ones that we're asking for approval for tonight. And some of the other advisory committees will start, have sent out notices, and will have more names for you at the October meeting.
Okay. So I just, before we act, I just want to thank each and every one of these people for their willingness to serve in this advisory capacity. I know the staff have vetted these individuals, but their time is valuable. We appreciate their service to the schools. Any questions or comments from board members? You are seeking approval on this group of, this first group of members?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions or comments, or do we have a motion?
I make motion that we accept this slate of advisory committee members.
All right, Ms. Emels made a motion, Ms. Ayers. Ms. Ayers is second to the motion. All in favor, please respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Next thing, we're asking for approval of a contract agreement to provide orientation and mobility instruction for our students with disability or disabled students that need that type of service. This is a mobility and orientation agreement that we've had previously, and it's just updating it.
All right, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that she meets all of her vendor qualifications in terms of child abuse and all that stuff?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Was this done in a competitive process?
Dr. Prince, you want to speak to that? Was this done in a competitive process?
Good evening, Dr. Prince.
Good evening. She actually has worked for us before. So we normally have a service agreement with AIS that was terminated last year. So we sought out someone that we had already vetted, that we had used in the past. So she will be working with one student.
Did you say one student?
Yes.
All right, questions, I'm sorry, questions or comments for Dr. Prince or Dr. Jones?
So it's new this year. She's new this-
This particular vendor, right?
But we-
We've had agreements previously with AIS, right?
Okay, that is correct.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, please respond with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. The next item is to receive a recommendation on renaming Pocahontas Middle School, since it no longer serves as a school. Staff has looked at lots of different names. The information, as we've talked about previously, that we received was that we needed to keep the name Pocahontas in the title. So we worked on that. We talked about a lot of different options. We finally settled on including landmark in the title because it has been officially recognized as a historic landmark, thanks to the efforts of Dr. Prince. And because several organizations will be using it, not just the school board office, but Parks and Rec and Christmas Mother, just for now, and it may be more others. We talked about it being a complex. So the name that the staff is coming forward with is the Pocahontas Landmark Complex. And we talked about Powhatan, or the Pocahontas Community Facility. We talked about historical in the name. But this is the title that we came up with and are sending this to the board for their consideration.
All right. All right, discussion by the board. We have a recommendation tonight. Dr. Jones has expressed that they considered some other options and items. I know this is, I've been asked this question a few times when we're going to rename it. A lot of people are still calling it the old Pocahontas Middle School. Yeah, it's now, it's certainly worthy of its recognition as a historical landmark, and we need to talk about what the future holds.
We're also, we need to include the NAACP, because their office will be in there as well, correct?
You're right, yep.
Okay?
Yep.
And so do we need to let the public know, or how, how does this work?
We could, we could put it out there and, and there's no time limit. We're just sending this forward to you now for your consideration. So if we wanted to, you could tell us to go back to the drawing board and come up with other names. Or we can put it out there and get some comments from the public and see what they think, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Well, I like the, how, the reasoning behind the three words. But I guess I just would like to have some input from the public, too.
And we're happy to do that. What we had heard previously from the public was they, as long as it included Pocahontas, they would be happy with it. But we can send the whole name out there and get feedback if that's the board's pleasure.
Do the rest of you think?
I'm just saying the words over and over in my head. Landmark doesn't seem to roll, did it, was Pocahontas Historic Complex considered?
We talked about that name, yes.
I guess I just have a personal preference for that.
Yeah, and Mr. Kunkka, I think I'm in the same place. I-
Landmark, I can't think of a landmark in any building, any name of anything.
Yeah, we want to, we want to give it the weight it deserves, but it's, it's such an important, it's an important thing. You want the name to be appropriate for, it has to serve both what it is and what it will be in the future, and also recognize what it was.
Was in the past.
And that's, that's a complicated issue. And one of the groups that we haven't talked about, too, is that the county does share space over there. They're going to use the gym, I guess, and they'll have, they'll have county offices there. So it might be appropriate to at least let them have, have some input into what the name of the structure is. And as you said, we have no, we're not on a pressure point to, to make this decision tonight, so we can begin the discussion this evening and talk about where we go.
Mr. Chairman, that'd be my preference to, to at least take a little while to, to gauge the response to the name. So I would be one that would be in favor of taking this as a, as an information piece rather than, rather than making a recommendation on it tonight.
Right. And I, and I think, Mr. Cole, that I'm very much in the same place. I think it's a, it's a discussion we need to start, it's a discussion we need to have. But I think, just speaking only as an individual member, I'd like some more information, and I'd like to engage some more people in the process.
The African-American community for the historical part. I don't know if Dr. Prince has a, the list of the, or would you just give that to the NAACP, or?
Well, and I would agree with that. And I, and I'm, I think the county would be an important stakeholder in this decision. And I think really, this building will serve all of our citizens in the county. So I think in some way, we've got to engage everybody in this process, so.
Maybe a PR kind of thing of name the content, or name the new complex, or?
Mr. Chairman, being the-